The meeting of the Diamond Regional School Committee for the March ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Have a roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Here.
Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Here.
Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Nera?
Yes.
We have a call. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, three point, I mean, one point three, the public hearing on FY twenty-four budget. Is there anyone here on the budget?
I don't have any requests.
No one? No one online, right?
They did not request this week. There are some people online, but they did not request this week. Not yet, any.
All right, we'll move on to one point four, public hearing on school choice.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Kitchen has a presentation on the budget.
Do you want to get the presentation now, or?
You've done it the other way.
Okay.
So that's right. We close the public hearing, then when it's on a regular agenda, you make your presentation.
Very good. No one?
Right, Mr. Bozan?
No, I don't have any requests.
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Closing. One point five, need the approval of February ninth, two thousand twenty-three minutes.
So?
Need a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Did we do school choice, did we do the school choice public hearing?
That was the pub, school choice, correct. Closing.
Did we did it?
Oh, I didn't mean to do it.
I'm sorry.
She asked if there was anybody for school choice.
I think she was talking about the budget.
I was, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Close it on school choice.
Nope, I don't have anyone requesting, just keep on either one.
Okay. One point five, approve the minutes of the November, uh, February ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Need a second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. One point six, student report, Ryan Neal.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Neal. I'm a junior in electricity. And to the government, would like to report things going on around the school. Girls' path, made the MIA playoffs and had a great season. Ice hockey made the MIA playoffs as well and had one of their best seasons ever with that seventeen and four record, and they also won the Mayflower Conference. Boys and girls track had multiple students set school records. A number of boys and girls athletes made the state competition. The dance team finished first in jazz and second in hip-hop at the state prep competition, and they also finished fourth in the state. Diamond student bastards participated in Read Across, Read Across America Day and read book to Sylvia Elmer to school students. The student government day will be held in person at Massachusetts State House on March third, first, two thousand twenty-three. Our student class president and vice president will be attending. On March eleventh, we will hold a dodgeball tournament for all students to support the Diamond football team. We're, we are currently organizing a staff and student basketball game, and students are very expect, and students are very excited for spring sports and club activities.
Okay, when you have questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost forgot to read the most important part. According to Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty F, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A moment, a member of the public who wishes to record the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements. Audio or video equipment established by the chair is not to interfere with the meeting.
Is anybody recording, William?
Not to my knowledge.
Usually Mr. Mattos.
Yeah, he is on, but he did not notify me that he was recording.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't know if there's any citizens input, but there was a recent decision from the SJC regarding the Thomas Scarborough Mass regarding, uh, public comment, citizens input, so at some point in time, I will be reporting back to the board. We have to change certain ways that we do things. I'm not sure.
Under citizen input?
It ran over, it just ran over, the decision was just rendered. It, it directly deals directly with citizens input in the state of Massachusetts, so just want to let you know that over the next couple of months, I'll probably be reporting back to you, and we may need to change it. I'm not sure, but we may need to change it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is no one signed up for citizen input? Two point oh unfinished business, we had the MSBA, SBC.
Uh, at this time, we both, um, there's a few, um, things that working out between Colliers, our Fermi, and Suffolk, and we hope to have it all done in the next week, so, uh, the only thing I'll ask the chairman is if they do need a vote before our, uh, April meeting, um, we can possibly pull, uh, put together a form to vote on it. If not, we have to wait till even, we just don't have it at this time.
Okay. Three point oh, other matters, we have the FY twenty-four budget. Mr. Kitchen?
So, this year's, uh, I should say, in the FY twenty-four budget, we're looking at a, a budget figure of thirty million, excuse me, thirty million eight four zero nine five seven. As everyone's, as the members of the voter are aware, the two primary, uh, components of, uh, of our budget, which makes net school spending a minimum contribution, is the required, uh, district contributions by the towns and the chapter seventy-eight. So going forward, even though our enrollment is down seventeen for the reporting period of October the first of two thousand twenty-two, our minimum contribution is going to be increased by three hundred thirty-nine thousand eight thirty-five, and our chapter seventy-eight is going to be increased by one point two eight one four four one. In looking at the enrollments in the, uh, I guess socioeconomic portion of it, we've got a larger portion of English language and general learners this year. So it has gone up from eighteen last year to thirty. So there is a weighted average to that. Special ed populations remained at seventy-one for last year. And so even though there's a, there's a dip in it, and also the, the maximum contribution of chapter seventy, we'll up every year is four point five percent, so our increase is five point five. So it's been a generous, uh, contribution based on the rain being pummeled and the availability of counsel. All right, so as I stated, our minimum contribution is given by our sending communities. This is a breakdown of what our sending communities and home ones are. It's down fifteen by Fall River, it's down four by Somerset, it's down two by Swansea, and it's up four to Westport. Correlated to that is the contribution levels. So Westport, I mean, Fall River, even though it's down, still has an increase of thirty-four thousand dollars. Somerset will be eighty-four thousand for eighty-nine. Swansea, uh, having, actually, that just went wrong, I'm sorry. Yep, Swansea is up seventy thousand, and Westport is up a hundred fifty, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which gives us our three-three-nine minimum contrib, uh, local contribution.
Um, Mr. Chair, Kitchen?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. Have all the towns and the city been notified of what the, are there, were there changes?
I've sent, I've sent the, the DESI numbers to the communities that have requested them. Somerset has not requested them. Swansea, Westport, and Fall River, and so I reported them out. I did not report out the assessment numbers until last night, so that could, because there's, there's a capital assessment portion of it too.
Right.
So I didn't do that, but I sent them the DESI forms of, uh, what their minimum contribution's going to be. I mean, there are norms.
I was talking to one of the, like, Somerset, and they're looking for the act, what they issue budget for the next fiscal years, or what you.
But that, that tonight's vote, I spoke with Mr. Bentley briefly about it, rather than sending out prematurely, I'd wait for tomorrow morning and I'll send out those numbers.
One, one thing while our current numbers, you see Westport's numbers, they're, they're wrong.
I heard.
And Mr. Bentley and Mr. Kitchen found the issue. There are six students coming out of Westport, going to other schools, and we're getting.
Westport is not built for it.
Westport's getting those.
As a school choice.
So when you see the changes for, we actually have six kids that are going to other schools. Five to Derby?
Five at Derby, one at Alabot.
Do we, do we? Westport kids are going somewhere else, but Diamond is being built for them.
They fall into school.
Westport pays for it.
Westport pays.
Okay.
Well, Diamond and the school where they are receive money for them, but Westport is paying them.
They're collecting an alternative vocational setting.
The.
Oh, I see. Are they going to Derby for a?
Vocational setting, yes. And so they pay, oh, it's not Derby, and then we get a reduction in our school sending tuition, and on chapter seventy.
The, did you ever find out if any of those are from teachers who have contracts that allow them to bring their family?
We didn't, we, I went into the student identification numbers, but we didn't ask the.
Because some of those, some of those numbers can be, the, there are school districts where the, uh, the union members can, if they're, have a child that's going to high school, they can, a child can attend their high school that they're working in. So that might be where some of those numbers are coming from. I did contact Maria Ponce, who's a superintendent of Fall River, and they are at, only at the secondary level, uh, they are a school choice school, so they allow it. Right, but if it was school choice, I think there'd be a lot more to it, because Westport has school choice kids go to Dartmouth than anywhere else. So I'm just wondering, in, in this aspect, are they choice, or are they teachers who have contracts that allow them, their child to go to their school, Alabot, Derby, et cetera? We didn't dig that deeply into it. I do know that Derby High School does allow, that if they're a member teaching the Fall River school system, that an out of Fall River, uh, student can attend a Fall River school. I do know that. That's been that way for a long time.
I think that they're, even though they're, if there might be more than that, actually, attending Westport, that they're enrolled in a vocational setting.
Correct.
So those six stu, well, those five students are enrolled at Derby in a vocational setting, so therefore they're qualified as a seventy-four program in that, that child's seventy-four students, therefore that's why we get the.
Right, so, so if, so what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is if, if instead of them going to Diamond, they went to Derby because their mom works there or dad works there, and they go into vocational training there, and that's probably why we're getting the assessment for it, or getting money for it, not an assessment. But the, uh, and to say they went Alabot, because Alabot is a vocational school, that the same thing happened there. So they made, is that's what's happening in the numbers, you know what I mean? So, because if it's choice, it shouldn't be happening. If it's a choice school movement, then, then it shouldn't happen.
I don't think more of the school choice at the high school.
At the high school, it is, Maria confirmed that when I, I did work with her on that. She says, only at the secondary level, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the second component, obviously, is the, uh, the chapter seventy. So, in the chapter seventy figures, uh, over the years, we've seen our chapter seventy-eight base on our enrollment on top, top is, you know, twenty-one was fourteen ninety-eight, twenty-two is fourteen ninety-eight. We did have a, a large increase of one point five million. Uh, and then in twenty-three, we had a low enrollment, which dropped down that chapter seventy number with the decrease in, uh, local contribution, which gave us a very small number for this year, uh, for our increase. Again, we have a small link, we have a small decrease, uh, in, in enrollment, but I think it's due to the populations that we have and the generous, uh, AV fund money that we have, and getting the four point five percent maximum amount for chapter seventy-eight. That gives us our, uh, net school spending figure for our increase of one point six million dollars. Second component of our assessment is our transportation. Our transportation cost for the, this year, next year, and the year after is tied into our contract, which is a flat rate, puts in just over a million dollars for the runs. Our chapter seventy-one aid is based on our expenditure of last year. So we get a six hundred sixty-one thousand dollars in aid, which reduces the assessments of the towns, which is broken up by their percentages of enrollment. Charging off for Westport would be thirty-three thousand, thirty-five thousand for Swansea, forty-three thousand for Somerset, and then three hundred thousand for, uh, for, uh. The new component is the interest that's due on the ban. So we did borrow twenty-five million dollars, the ban interest was, uh, four point two five percent. So we will need to pay the interest next year of one million eighty-one thousand two fifty. That is broken, that is assessed based on the, uh, I guess the regional agreement, set, set forth in the debt schedule, uh, with Unibank, and the, those are the reflective figures for the towns and the city. Putting them together, so you'll have your foundation, your transportation, your capital, and that'll be the total severance assessment for each of the towns and the city of Fall River. How we look at our expenditures, I did a comparison between what we currently have in FY twenty-three, so we've had some minor transfers, but, uh, substantially the same as the voted of last year. So our administrative increase is eighty-seven thousand. Our instructional, which is our teacher salaries, any instructional equipment, any instructional supplies, uh, but basically two thousand accounts, uh, guidance, psych services. There's an increase in that of one million one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And the three thousands, it's only a minor increase of thirty-one thousand dollars. And plant and operations, we're looking at forty-nine thousand, which would be primarily fuel and light. And then our, a larger one is, uh, retirement insurance, primarily it's insurance. Our active insurance, uh, active employee insurance is estimated to increase by six point seven percent. The retiree insurance is going to be five percent, it's based on five percent increase. Uh, and then school choice, our sending tuition is estimated at seventy-seven thousand, so it would be decreased. So looking at our allotment of, uh, one point six million dollars, majority of it is going to our instruction, which is a strong, a good thing, I guess. And then, uh, our retirement insurance, which is not unusual with anybody else. Uh, the significant areas that are impacted by the, by those expenditures, um, the major change in, I, I just took the larger ones, but, uh, of the, of the teaching, uh, teacher salaries, we have an increase of four hundred thirty-four thousand six fifty-one, which represents what we're, what we're suggesting, the administration's suggesting is to have three new positions. One is an automotive technology related teacher, one is a health assistant teacher, a related teacher, and then an English language learner teacher. Uh, as we stated earlier, the population of ELR students has increased, uh, and, um, there's a, we did post this year for one, I just thought it'd be prudent to put in the budget next year. Uh, as far as automotive tech, it's one of the larger, but one of the more popular shops, it has good retention. And with the changes in automotive technology, they've moved the related teacher a number of years ago, and then we just want to put it back into the, into the classroom. As far as health assisting, we made, there was a, an expenditure on the sims room, and also for the related teacher that goes out at the second half of the year, and therefore we, I thought that would be a, a prudent addition. As far as backfilling, we have the back, we posted for math teacher. We posted and, uh, have two potential candidates for the electronics teachers program on web we posted for, and for the advanced manufacturing teacher, unfortunately, that's speaking again. As far as the substitutes, we, annually, we posted for, we budgeted for two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. With the federal grants, we've always offset that a little bit and transferred it out, so that'll be back up to two fifty. Instructional equipment is based on the department request, of, it's an increase of a hundred and seventy-three thousand three forty-four. General supplies, it's up about eighty-five thousand, based on requests. Athletics, the increase is due to transportation field rental, that's roughly a million three thousand dollars. Utilities, fuel and light, actually, it's not a substantial increase, it's fifty-five thousand roughly, maintenance of building. We did, uh, reduce the amount for abatement, because we don't anticipate abatement, but we do, um, concerned about the issues we had with the elevators last year. So if we have a replacement, it's going to be a major expenditure. Again, active insurance, up three hundred sixty-five thousand, retiree insurance increased by forty-one thousand. So that's our, that's our distribution. So for the blue up top, that's the, the light blue is, uh, our administration. The orange is our instruction. The gray is our, uh, student, student activities. The mustard is facilities. The darker blue is our, uh, insurance. Represents a, a healthy instruction, I would say. In the fact that you did have a, a breakdown, one by line, there's.
Yeah.
That's, that's details I thought you could probably get, but the other one, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I came in, I sat with Mr. Kitchen and, uh, went over the whole budget with him, and he answered all my questions at that time, but I will say that, um, between himself and the administrators and the department heads, they did a great job putting this budget together, and, um, I, I, I appreciate that the teachers that were taken out are being put back, uh, because the biggest point in that is, is the students, um, that, when I was in school here, the, having a lot of mechanics on academic weeks helped me when I got into the shop. By not having it, um, it, it hurts the kids more than, so I'm glad that that is being put back in for the students.
Any other questions or comments on the budget?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. The recommendation to, to, to approve the FY twenty-four budget has submitted.
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. Thank you.
Well, uh, just a, Mr. DiBiaseu's point, global dues, I'll send out the, the cover sheet tomorrow to the town administrators and administrators. Thank you. Could you also send us the powerpoint for the breakdowns? Absolutely. You're the only ones that, do you have a difference from the towns last year and this year? Twenty-three, twenty-four? I can get that for you, yeah, absolutely.
All right, moving on to three point one of the matters, the school choice, Mr. Bentley, the report?
We heard that there was no comment tonight for school choice and no public discussion of it. So with that, my recommendation is that the greater Fall River Vocational School District, uh, Diamond Regional, not be a school choice for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year because of its inability to accept all students wanting to enroll from the four different committees.
Need a motion on that?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Moving on to the C, the MSBA School Building Committee update.
I've, uh, I've been in touch with, uh, both Colliers, Castle Blues, and Suffolk over the last couple of weeks. The OPM designer and CM are meeting biweekly, review the project process. The team is working together to plan, schedule, procurement, and site logistics items. The, the team did, uh, the CM contract, uh, we did that already, the, the team received comments back from the MSBA regarding the design development package. Comments were in line with expectations based on the level of the value management that was required. If anybody is interested, we, we were, as we all know, the, uh, the, the MSBA is giving us three hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. The new schools that are in before this schematic design are being, uh, given three hundred and ninety-three. We've been asking, we asked them to consider us for the extra money since the, uh, the inflation rate of steel, for example, one eighteen percent, and it was hurt by some of the new schools. The answer we got back, um, the MSBA sent us correspondence back regarding the request for consideration, we got in new funding levels, uh, no adjustment is allowed based on the project funding agreement. The letter did note that the MSBA, MSDANS, at many districts are working with their state legislators to determine if any additional funding might be available for their school projects. Uh, they encourage the greater Fall River to continue to work with its legislative delegation to determine if any additional fundings might be available for Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School. So, uh, I did ask how far along are we with the design, and they're approximately ten percent, and they're working hard to get it, uh, get it to that forty percent to where we can view the project a little better and have a, um, a, another, uh, oversight committee meeting once that, that level is reached. Uh, the MSBA does have a meeting, I believe, next week, which is March twenty-third. For, that's for the, um, required by the MSBA, and that's to let the architects and colliers go over the, and Suffolk, go over the project where they're at and what they're doing. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Moving to the, um, MSBA project stretches, I'd just like to say, I, I'm having a little problem because we still don't have a contract with Suffolk at this point. And we're already in March, so I don't see, maybe if we hold back on, on, on a payment for somebody, that they don't move a little quicker on this project?
Mr. Chairman, my feeling on that is, is you're not only penalizing the, um, people who are working just on the contract, most of these payments are for, there's subcontractors who are putting together, like, for example, the Castle Blues, are, are working with, um, uh, our, our, Craig and Craig, and, and putting like the designing of the, uh, clutch design and et cetera. So they have subcontractors, they have to pay, and that's most of where this building is coming from.
But we still don't have a contract, we're in March, we've been working on this for how many months?
Right, I agree totally, there were some problems, I know, I, I asked, uh, Tim from Colliers to call Greg, because he had a question for Greg, and, um, uh, he, he's, Greg spoke to both Suffolk and, uh, Colliers this week. Greg, what's your feeling?
Well, there's, there's no question, it seemed to be a little bit of a disconnect. I, I, as I told, um, Colliers, that I, right now, the, it's been sent back to, um, Suffolk with the amendments or questions or whatever issues, he didn't get into, he didn't get into it with me what the issues were other than the indemnification and some language changes. And I told him that he should now get this back from them, see where it stands, and that we, we have to have a meeting right away if this is not resolved, I mean, it's, it's way too long. It's got, I mean, it's got to get done. And there's, there's a little bit of back and forth, that's the, where the problems lie, you know, you know, but, uh.
I just think we might get a, a better result if.
Yeah, they were, they were.
We're holding back on, on a payment.
What's the biggest thing?
What's the problem? Where's the contention of penalizing the contract?
I'm going to be very honest with you, and I think Mr. Kitchen will also agree. We don't know.
Well, I think, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest problem that we have in the Suffolk's didn't want to include Castle Blues, St. Colliers, and the indemnifying part of the contract.
They, they brought that up to me, but I have to, again, in good conscience, I obviously represent this committee. That's the same issue that they've said has been going on for nearly two months.
Correct, that I.
They, they, they've already said they're going to indemnify us, we're the owner.
Because the insurance has been figured out, you might correct, that's what the kitchen.
And, man, Mr. Kitchen, you got the language to put in the contract, which is, that's already done.
That's done, and that, this is the only sticking point that's left, and Suffolk's attorney is supposed to be getting back to, um, Ca, uh, Colliers to discuss that part of the contract. They did, I asked, uh, both Castle Blues and Colliers if this is a normal thing, that they're not included, and they said absolutely not, it usually is included in the contract with the CM. So, um, so I don't understand why Suffolk's is asking for it to be out. I have not asked, I know you talked to them, um, but I. I have not asked, I know you talked to them, but I've not spoken to.
I just, I just, I can't believe that's the only hangup. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not casting blame on anybody, but it's been going on for two months. We knew that, that was one of the original topics.
Well, the insur, that was the topic in the insurance. The insurance was just settled a couple of weeks ago, about a week.
There's still, I mean, there's still.
There's still something going, but it's basically.
Well, the insurance part of it, and Mr. Kitchen led the way, the insurance part of it was we went to a whole new different design, that we're going to now take upon the insurance in order to save us some money. Mr. Kitchen was in the lead with that. So that is an issue that has been ongoing, but, but the.
Well, what I'm saying is that's all part of the contract, and that was more or less finished up with Mr. Kitchen last week. So the only sticking point left this week was the.
No, that's not what he told me.
Okay, what did he tell you?
He, he didn't give me the questions. There are, there are other issues he didn't even tell me. He said he sent them back to Suffolk, and they were in Suffolk's hands, the Suffolk to address. The only issue he talked to me about was an indemnification clause, and there was some billing issues relative to what they're going to be billing for under the, the AIA contract, which is the one they choose. So he said he was going to speak with Paul, but I'm not sure if he did, because he said then he was going to send it back to Suffolk. And that's when I even told you that I think I told, and I did tell him. But whatever you get back, we have to sit down at that point because it's got to get resolved.
Right. And they, and everybody agrees that if this doesn't get worked out for the next couple of weeks, we are going to schedule, and Mr. Bentley's been involved in that conversation, as well, that we're going to get together with the team and sit down and say, what's holding this up? And the lawyers will be here, we'll be here to figure this out if we have to. But I, I've, I've been told that it should be settled by the end of the week or, by the end of next week, and, and then just give it to us for signing.
What is the scheduled date for groundbreaking? I believe it's March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth is right now, we're going by that, that was going to be the scheduled date.
Ten days. Two weeks.
Correct.
I know they're already.
So is there anything legally standing in the way of Paul's suggestion of fully payment?
No, I'll leave that up in the kitchen, but I don't think so. But I'm, I'm not saying for him to make a decision, but I don't, I don't believe so.
What I, what I was suggesting in the packet, because it was, it arrived timely before the, before the packet went out, was an invoice from Castle Blue's. Castle Blue's has been very responsive, they're available. And then the invoice for Colliers came in this week, I believe, so it wasn't in the packet. So what I would do is just act on the one that was in the packet, Castle Blue's.
How about Suffolk?
There is no bill for Suffolk.
There is no. Okay.
All right. Would that be a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, so the board knows and the general public, Suffolk has continued to work. I mean, it hasn't, to, to their credit, they have not held it up saying, we don't have a contract, we're not working. They have continued to work and assist us moving forward. But obviously, we need a document. So, so.
They are involved in the groundbreaking.
Exactly.
We need to set a fire here to get people moving here.
I agree. The, Mr. Kitchen, the, the Castle Blue's update available is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred. So I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve Castle Blue's two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred dollar fund.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
So you oppose it?
I oppose.
But now is it getting, now is it, is Castle, Castle Blue's really, doesn't really have anything to do with the Suffolk contract?
They've assisted.
Who's holding it up?
Excuse me, but.
Who's holding it up?
It's, 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 it's the conversation now that exists between our project manager, who's basically responsible for it, and I would say Suffolk, who say, holding it up. The conversations have gone on between them two, and there's been no resolution. Depending on who you talk to, they will blame each other first.
But it's not Castle Blue's?
No, it's not. Not to my knowledge, they haven't got involved. I would not say.
They, they, the only involvement they have is they're in the, is because of the demarcation of, the demarcation of the, of them not being in the contract. Of course, they want that in the contract. But they, they've been meeting, like I said, the thing, and my minutes, the, that, they've been meeting biweekly, and that has been discussed between the three of them, getting this done and having that done. I don't know where they are today, I did not talk to.
I talked to Tim Alex from Colliers yesterday, and he told me that the, they have now given a response back to Suffolk, and it's with Suffolk's lawyers. And I told him, I asked him, I shouldn't say told him, I asked him to contact Suffolk immediately and determine when we're going to get a response from them. And at that point in time, if this is not resolved, then we're going to call a meeting together, myself, Mr. Kitchen, Suffolk, their attorneys, Colliers, Castle Blue's is going to be present, and we're going to get to the bottom of what is exactly the problem, why it's being held up.
I, I'd just like to send a message saying that we're not happy at this point, and you guys need to get your act together.
I, I think this.
Are you surprised? I'm not surprised.
All right. But I, at this point, thank you for approving Castle Blue's because I, I, they have a lot of subs they're paying, and I like to keep that happening so we get moving on the, the architect plans.
As far as the, as far as the design plan, you mentioned we're at ten percent, we want to be at that forty percent. Was it anticipated to be at that forty percent by now?
Um, that is supposed to be, yes. Originally, if we had not had to go back to the towns and the city for the votes that at first, you know, we'd have been held up by that. So we're, we're still about a month behind what we wanted to be a month in line of where we're supposed to be. But don't, don't, I mean, Suffolk's is still going at it, even though they don't have a contract, and so is Castle Blue's, because they've been in contact with both Mr. Bentley and me. The most recent thing is, is clearing out the, the appeals and getting all the equipment out of the way because they're going to stop bringing in equipment.
And my last conversation with Suffolk is they're putting together their logistics plan right now in terms of getting on site. So you, there should be some changes in terms of visually seeing people around, there should be a, good word, Mr. Kitchen, there should be a presence on site here now of Suffolk that the ball's going to start going. They, they've been very good in terms of continuing to do work and to be involved.
I mean, at some point, they don't want a contract.
Well, at some point, they're obviously going to want to get paid some money. They've been very, I mean, they've only billed us fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's fine. I mean, it's somewhat surprising, but that's all they billed us.
That's okay.
Well, I know, I'm complaining, but it did surprise me.
Yeah. I did, one more thing, I did, Mr. Rabello advised them that they need to give you at least a week, if not more, of when they're going to take your pocket spaces. So they will be in contact with you and Mr. Bentley. How about that?
So there was a Charlie Roberts today called, and he wants a conversation with Glenn and Miles during the week of March the twentieth, and they want to start looking at on the field, the field of things that are going to stay and where they're going to go, and things that are going to go away. Erin Kenny has contacted me through email, and she had indicated that by the end of this month, there will be a plan that they will have, and they will go through the plan on exactly what's going to be happening.
Thank you. From that standpoint, David, you know, Suffolk's really working with us.
All right. Moving on, personnel, Mr. Bentley?
On personnel, for appointments, which you can see for the committee's information, we are continuing to show the committee the number of individuals who have hired on grants enough to do what's called curriculum mapping, or curriculum developing, and that is the complete list. On this list, at towards the end, there is a Kathy Naderis, who has been recently hired as the LPM instructor for design. And you see that Richard Vickley's name is mentioned, that is long-term substitute for an APAC instructor who is absent, he is Ben Nader. I believe that that is coming to an end shortly, as that instructor is coming back from surgery. But I continue to show the committee the number of people from advertised positions being paid out of grant money in order to work on curriculum. Next, on resignations, we do have two from the LPM, Joanna Brown and Nicholas Tamaris from Advanced Manufacturing. And there has been a retirement announcement of Mrs. Kathy Ernia in the cafeteria, been here a long time, real great worker, good person, but she has a retirement date coming up February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And that's all the personnel.
As far as the, I just have a question on the curriculum mapping developer, I know they're under grants, everything. Maybe the storage can help you on this. The health assistant, they require three to be able to, to put that together. I'm not really sure what their role is.
Certainly, and Mrs. Barbe is here, she can speak a little bit to that, in case I don't do it justice, but we have changed our nurse safe provider who would be testing. We have a new, a new, you know, vendor, and they do things differently. So this isn't so much to revise the curriculum for the sake of revising the curriculum, this is to take a look at the curriculum, and each teacher, that's why we have three, is looking at the grade level that they're teaching and preparing the students so that they are qualified and have all of the information that we need to work with the students to be prepared to sit for the CNA testing. And this is, is I read anything else?
No, that's, that's correct.
That makes sense.
It's, it's looking at the skills criteria and just making sure that we have included everything in our curriculum that is required for them to pass their state certification exam.
Right, perfect. I know there's a lot to it, so I was just curious on what they're.
We were caught a little bit by surprise when the Red Cross bowed out and they had the other testing company, and we didn't do this with that company. And for the first time ever, we had some students fail because we didn't know how they were going to be testing the students. So we didn't want that to happen again, now that this, now that that company bowed out of the state testing program again, and now we have another company, we didn't want that to happen again.
I mean, optimally, I want the students to be successful, so if they out of grant, that's even better. So, perfect, thank you.
I think it's important to note that the New England accreditation of schools is coming starting next year. One of the most important things that they look for is units, curriculum, they'll ask for these, so having them all in order is important. That's why I'm assuming that.
The student travel request, Mr. Bentley?
We do have, as you see, the student's request before you there for the National Honor Society. It is an out-of-state trip as they're going to be going to New York. The dental assisting program is doing traveling for their DANB and ICE exam. It's in Warwick, Rhode Island. On that right there for the student request. You see that Mrs. Torres, who is sitting here tonight, she has submitted an out-of-state travel request to go to the Rhode Island Convention Center. That is in conjunction with a project that she just spoke about, the house building, or what they're doing at the Coventry Shop. And Torres has also submitted an out-of-state travel request to Bryant University for the unveiling of that same project, Rosemary's Wish Kids, which is coming up. Each of this requires to leave the state of Massachusetts.
Recommendation is to approve the student travel. Is second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
F, distinguished graduate honorary diploma?
Definitely a point of recognition and gives all of us a really good, warm, fuzzy feeling, is that we do get the opportunity every year to refer a distinguished graduate and an honorary diploma recipient. So this year, the Special Recognition Committee has proposed the following for the, for this committee's further action. For the distinguished graduate, there is Stephen Moss Sisson and Paul Jennings, who are sitting on this committee.
I'm not sure about.
Paul, we have to vote, honestly, you say they get that when you retire.
Mr. Jennings, it must be.
Try and tell us something.
And our, the honorary diploma is going to a gentleman I feel is very deserving, has put up a career into this building, and that is Mr. Glenn Beddies. Those were the selections by the committee, and they're now put before you. The recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-three distinguished graduate award recipients as Paul Jennings and Stephen Moss Sisson, and the honorary diploma recipient as Glenn Beddies.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Mr. Jennings, you have to let the state to be.
There's no money in dollars. There's no money to involve.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
How many years is it?
Twenty-one.
And I do want.
Member of Congress.
Do want to point out that Mr. Jennings has now become the longest-serving member of this committee.
Wow.
Okay, and that's, that's quite a historical accomplishment. I think I just said that's a nice way of saying your role.
Who did he surpass?
How many years?
Forty-one.
Twenty-one.
Who did he surpass? Who was?
He surpassed, it was Ed Hill, but prior to that, we're going back to the golden old days, where you had Russ Harmon and Bernie, get, we're going that way there.
They were part of the original.
They were part of the original group when they were here. Bernie Weaver, I'm sorry, I'm going to just for a moment. So that was the original group. Their names are on a plaque on this building somewhere, that indicates them as the founders of the building. So it's quite a new group that you've just joined. Mr. Jennings?
G, we get the National Technical Honor Society.
So this, this is something new that was proposed to me by the Vagant teachers association. I, I fully endorse this. There is the National Honor Society, which you're all familiar with because it's been in schools forever. There is also a gentleman who I had the pleasure of meeting years ago, never carried it forward, and I've reconnected with him at a recent conference, and two of our advisors from Skills USA, they met up with this gentleman, and it is the National Technical Honor Society chapter. It is a different spin on National Honor Society, as the students who belong to the National Technical Honor Society are specific for career and technical education programs. It is the honor society for vocational students. I do have some information behind the green sheet on what it does. One of the things that they absolutely do on page two, is a better one, that it honors the achievements of CTE students, it provides scholarships in excess of over three hundred thousand dollars, that's across the entire country. But they look at every single trade that's out there. They try to bridge the gap and make students feel the importance of career and technical education. They, the mission is to bring that message to the community, to recruit and retain students coming to vocational schools and pursuing a career path. It, it will be new here at Diamond. There is a different threshold to belong to this, as National Honor Society has academic criteria, this one is much more career and vocation-based. So it does open the door to more students to be recognized for their achievements in their vocational programs, while also connecting to community service, and while also seeking out jobs and scholarships for their trade, not based upon academics, but for their trade accomplishments as well as academics. It really hits all bells and whistles. This is something when I was sitting in Mr. Rabello's spot, I wish I had been bright and smart enough and foreseeing the future to bring it up way back when in those days. It has been around for quite some time. There are two people who are interested, and they made a formal proposal to me, and my recommendation would be that this committee post for two advisors, as it will involve at least juniors and seniors, so it will involve all students eligible, as long as they have a certain grade point, which is lower than National Honor Society, because it's based on their vocational. And as far as stipends, this is the committee's prerogative on the stipend, but that, to kick it off, it mirrored the National Honor Society stipend, which is in the contract.
And it's a sooner DTA is going to agree with that.
Yes.
Built into the statute, because there's no position there.
There is.
With the subject to the approval of the DTA.
I'm proposing a superintendent under the contract that I can propose that, that it be done and it be established, but the fee that, of the stipend that's associated with it is within the realm of the association and the, and the school committee. I'm just proposing a stipend, going to have a talk.
The only question I have is, I agree with those a hundred percent, but we already have advisors for the juniors and the seniors now, but that'd be part of what they're doing already.
Those are the senior class advisors and the junior class advisors, and they are charged more, let's go to senior class, they're charged more with making sure that the senior prom and senior activities are run correctly. This is going to be, this National Technical Honor Society is going to dig deeper into the meaning of vocational education, how they perform in their shop, and what opportunities are there for career and tech ed students. So it's not the social, it will be social cost, but it's not exactly the social like the senior prom or the junior prom, that events that go on, which is the trip to Six Flags New England, where it's a social day for the students. That's what they're charged with. These advisors here would be, there's a very strict set of bylaws, there's a constitution and bylaws. If you want to see information, which I think is some of the best, is Blackstone Valley Tech High School, has a very successful chapter, it's very strong and popular in their, in their school. And I do know that the two people who look at this dug into their material in order to present it to me, but I already knew about it at Blackstone. So it's, it's different. It's, it would be difficult to meld them both together, Mr. Dean.
Any, any other questions in college? Seeing none. Need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Next is the Gen H.
Yes, the Gen H. The Gen H is specifically for Advanced Manufacturing Machine Tool Technology Program. Earlier, the school, this committee had heard information that there was an $18,000 award that was made by the Haas Foundation. I think Mrs. Torres, I know you're still sitting here, I believe that was just maybe a month ago or two months ago.
Right, actually, a couple of weeks ago, we received the $18,000 check.
And the, this committee at that time voted at that time that, you know, thank you, but let us know when it actually comes in. On the second page, it has information on the Haas Foundation, but on the backside of that is a copy of the donation that they've made towards the Advanced Manufacturing. And this, I believe, this is the second.
Donation.
That they've made. So they, Haas, which is one of the major manufacturers and producers and supporters of advanced manufacturing in the country, is a huge supporter of Diamond Regional. And they found after coming here, talking to the instructors, the students, giving me the equipment, there's a nice picture in the paper, not that long ago, they decided to award Diamond Regional their program $18,000. It's an award, quite the accomplishment. Kudos to the teachers, the staff down there, and to all the students.
Very good.
My recommendation is that, in fact, that this committee do vote to accept that donation in the amount of $18,000, and it is to support scholarships.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, FY twenty-three budget adjustment, Mr. Kitchen?
In your packet, there was a letter from the Department of Education stating that we did not meet our net school spending levels in FY twenty-two. That carryover figure is $1,423,000, excuse me, $733,000. Historically, what they, what the committee has done is by not meeting their spending, they place that carryover amount into the extraordinary maintenance line, and then you have to readjust the budget figure. So in this case, we would assess, assess the extraordinary repairs at $1,423,733, thus changing the FY twenty-three budget to thirty, thirty million, six hundred, forty-three thousand, four fifty-four.
One, one question, Chairman. On there, on the inter-office memorandum that you did, it was seven, seven, three, zero, zero, but on your recommendation, it's seven, three, three, zero, zero.
Well, I apologize. Seven, seven.
Seven, seven. So you're, you're asking for it to be at $1,423,773.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. VDFF.
Need a recommendation to make the transfer?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? J, monthly financial report?
There's nothing of, anything notable, other than we are spending out of the extraordinary maintenance line, commonly as a negative $128,986, and that is on page three. By doing that, that transfer will, will cover that negative balance. So those are expenditures that we've been making, one of which I believe is a meaningful that we charge for that line.
Any questions or comments?
Just one, Jim. Mr. Kitchen, we in line for the, everything for the end of the year, all this time, we just got to ask if we're going to be okay for doing.
We'll be, we'll be fine. I've been meeting with some of the, some of the shop, shop people, the most, the bottom heads. Tonight's question transfers is actually an expenditure. You'll see one for metal fat, I believe it's seventy, seventy-three thousand dollars for welding equipment. There's some repairs to be made for the advanced manufacturing to install the equipment that we're getting off Skills Capital Grant. We've been fortunate, though, to have the Skills Capital Grants, but we will have to look at spending some of that extraordinary maintenance line in, in the state within our requirements of net school spending. The upcoming year, you might see some large expenditures.
This is not notable. Jinxes. You just jinxed us.
You don't bring that up.
It's actual June.
I, I was speaking with someone I put in. The concern I have, and I, with, you know, the value engineering that we have out of the, of the project, is to make sure that our shops are well-equipped when we do the transfer, but also when we look at the academics. So, I mean, I may, I would be suggesting we look at some of the furnishings that we purchased now, since we transferred our mobile data. If we have the adequate funding now, we can do it. We still have Kier's money, we still have SR money, so offset our budgets. So while we have that one-time money, we should make full of the expenditures and improvements within the shops and, and the academics.
You, they, we discussed it when we went over the budget, we used to discuss the project.
Yeah, I believe, in the twenty-four budget, there is a build-in for some furnishings important, that's, it's going to be a little shy activity, according to my, my, my new project.
Mr. Kitchen, Chairman, Mr. Kitchen's been in contact with Castle Blue to discuss a lot of this.
Yep, yep, as far as the design and some of the services. Those, those grants, I, and Skills Capital will be rolling out the five million dollar windows till 2025, so, you know, as the building progresses, we might be able to get deliveries there. There's one that's expiring next June, and that is advanced manufacturing and dental. We'll look at what we have now. But we, I think it's a worthwhile investment to, you know, we, having two years old is much better than having those older combo desks and such around.
Very good. Keepers up. Thank you. Okay, okay, we have some expenditures for approval?
As I mentioned, there are a few expenditures. The Masek Corporation is part of Skills Capital, that's eighty, eighty-two thousand, one hundred dollars for equipment down in advanced manufacturing. With that, we have to do rigging of the new equipment coming in. Grant City is electrical for the upgrades inside that shop, and also Midwest is more electrical equipment that we're looking to do. Reality Works is medical assist equipment to purchase for the class. Metal Fab is Richie and Sons, that's within their budget now, so they're a bi-roller. Total welding is six combination welding units. That shop will require fourteen is what they're looking for, to be fully equipped, so perhaps later this year, we'll be looking at additional purchase. There is some money inside Skills Capital, but I think when we look at the larger pieces of equipment that we have purchased down the line, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it's probably better to buy them now. And then there's some gear gas of WB Mason. The WB Mason of eleven thousand, seven, one, seven, has to be amended to twelve thousand, one thirty-four, since this was sent out. Doesn't take long before the prices go up again, so we have to do an amendment on that. Maybe it's a twelve thousand, one thirty-four, running expenditure. That was a.
No sense.
Twelve, one, twelve.
Twelve, one, three, four. Twelve, one, three, four.
All right, need a motion to approve?
Motion made.
To the expenditures? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The transfers, Mr. Kitchen?
Transfer is from the salary line, teacher salary line, we're going to transfer fifty-one thousand, eight, twenty-five, and then for extraordinary maintenance, since we just made that large transfer in, we'll be transferring out one thirty-four, five, one, five. Followed areas will be receiving the cash that fifty-one, eight, two, five, spending through the superintendent salary line. Medical assisting appears to advanced manufacturing, metal fab, and all this technology equipment for the sum of one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, three forty.
Need a motion to make the transfers?
Motion made.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Kitchen, help again.
Previously, previously, and we were trying to get this done earlier in the year, roughly by January, in a conversation with the senior advisors, we will have it. Mrs. Goddard and Mrs. Woods reached out to the president of the class of twenty-two, Phil Soraus, and she's agreed to close the class of twenty-two account, and the intended use would be to transfer the funds, which is on the next page, is, is ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, thirty-two cents, for the purposes of donating a gift to the new school. In her note, she mentions a water fountain or a water feature to incorporate into the, the grounds.
You said it's how much?
It is ten thousand, nine, nine, six, one, two, two. So we can establish a, a heap of kind, hold there until we can design it with the, of the. Yep, yep. I think it'll be, be a nice feature.
Okay, let's see. We need to make a motion to accept the donation from the class of two thousand and twenty-two, purchase a gift.
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? FY twenty-two and the financial report, Mr. Kitchen?
At the end of the year financial report, the significant note is there are no instances of noncompliance with the agreed-upon procedures in the report. So this is the end of the year report of our state functions and categories, which the, the district has, so there are no irregularities. We did receive the balance of the other financials to move in next meeting, but this is just for the end of the year report.
Procurement of amount increase, Mr. Kitchen?
The practice, as I looked inside the policy online, I didn't see a policy per se on the expenditure of funds in excess of $5,000. So the practice has been that anything over $5,000 requires the school committee's approval. What I'm asking is to raise that practice to $10,000 to be in line with the school committee policy of DJE, where it states that the procurement of a, the procurement in the amount of $10,000 or less shall, shall be obtained through the exercise of sound, sound business practice. So give me the discretion to approve purchase orders and expenditures up to $10,000, and beyond that, then you have to get paid, quote, say, you have to get paid, and it's a notable figure that should come to the committee, but I'm asking to raise it from five to $10,000. These are already items that have been budgeted for, so ones that we've already approved. If there's an expenditure, there's an expenditure similar to this evening, there's an expenditure for $7,000 out of metal fab. He has the money in his line. So therefore, I could approve it and go through. If he had an expenditure and he wanted to buy something for $7,000, didn't have it in his line, I'd have to come forward and. Express transfer funds and then approval for the purchase. So if there is funds in the line, I, I, in this discussion with myself, Mr. Bentley or Mrs. Torres or Dr. Warren. So you don't even come to us for anything that's already budgeted for? No, for instance, the junior, the junior class has a fundraiser coming up. Mr. Rue put in a request for fundraising payment, sixty-eight hundred ballots. He came in after the publisher of this agenda, so therefore, it's kind of waiting for all the contacts, Mr. Jennings, and I was looking for that point. It's just, it's, the three items are kind of coming later on. The practice, I understand the practice, when it was, it was at $5,000, and now it's at $10,000, some business practice, your policy reflects $10,000. I think that's. Approval.
Okay, the recommendation is to raise the requirement of the sum of $10,000.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Syphilis of technology, Mr. Kitchen?
I may defer to Mr. Boza, but these are items that are Chromebooks and laptops that are no longer in service. Some of them have, our, the Haas Elite, but you did a good job of providing a list of the type of manufacturer of the model and the serial number, what we'll do is surplus the items. And I think there was already a vote on this, wasn't there? I don't think so. We did something last. There was a vote already.
I think last meeting, the meeting before we get down to Chromebooks.
We allowed to, anyhow, this is a complete list, because it includes laptops, so you don't know votes necessary, and you already took it. Yeah, thank you.
Would these items included in that other list or are things different?
This is a list.
Yeah, we'll just hold on.
I'm, I'm. I'm making a motion to.
To approve.
The list as, as here.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're covered now.
They did add a couple of things, so that's very.
Mr. Chairman, items Q and R, we are going to throw off till after executive session, but we will be arriving in the open session addressing Q and R.
Okay. Moving on to S, LPN program enrollment update.
Sorry, it's time to, I thought Mr. Boza was up, so I'm sorry.
Oh, this is the LPN.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's.
LPN program.
She is here, yes. Hello, I'm on.
I'm sorry, yes, on the LPN program, you can have my notes.
Yeah.
On the LPN program, as I've said to the committee in the last month's meeting, that I would continue to bring in the Laurie as the director for the program admissions and applicants, applicants as we move throughout this year and getting ready for next year. So that being said, there is a, this is prepared by Laurie. Laurie, you are on, so I'll let you carry the ball on this, please.
Okay, I'm ready. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. So for next year, I've already had sixty-nine total applicants for full-time day and part-time day. We have fourteen accepted into full-time day. We have nine accepted into our part-time day. Pretty much everybody that has been, made it to level three where I can interview, has been accepted into the program. There's only been one defined, one deferred, and two that were not accepted because their scores were lower than what we accept. So overall, we have, we have twenty-three total between full-time and part-time admissions for next year, twelve are in district. And as far as payment, seat fees, twelve out of the fourteen in full-time days have paid their seat fees, and five out of the nine in part-time days have paid their seat fees already. It depends when they're admitted, when they have to pay their seat fees, but so far, they've been very good about coming in and paying their seat fees within thirty days from the time they get their acceptance letter. We continue to do Facebook advertising to get people into the program. I have info sessions twice a month, and I've had some good, good turnouts, you know, three to five people, but those three, three to five people have been good people. The TES exam continues two times a month. This is where we're seeing our biggest issues. Last week, I gave a TES exam. There were ten people scheduled for the TES exam, only one person passed. So this continues to be a problem. Students want to come into the program, but they're not passing the TES exam, the entrance exam, in order to get into the program. We have, currently, we have sixteen people set up to take the TES exam in March. We have a couple more dates in March, and I've already got my April date set up. I'm doing interviews on Thursdays and Fridays from when they take their TES exam, and as long as they're ready for an interview, I'm available on Thursdays and Fridays for them to do this. I did two interviews today and one more scheduled tomorrow. And that's, I, I did, just on a little side note, I received notification today of a Perkins Grant four fifty-three that Diamond is eligible for $30,932 that I would have to use and spend by the end of August. And I went to a webinar last week, and there were a couple of us on it, and they said this would be available, and if I was interested, and I said, definitely, free money is for us. So I have to submit that application by March fifteenth to get that available money as well. Any questions?
Yeah, Laurie, I have one, Mr. Chairman. Do we have, I know a lot of, like, do, do, do these students have practice exams and stuff that they can do before they take the TES? Is there a study guide? Is there something, or are they going into?
Yes. Yes, so we do offer, we tell them to use the ATI T seven. This is a new TES, a new, a new version. This is a new TES, um, a new, a new version of it. It started in June, and it is supposed to be a little better than the last TES, but everybody struck, seems to struggle in the science portion. We get, we provide them with videos online that they can use. We also tell them where to get the study guides, and that there's even a mobile app that they can put on their phone, because we know, you know, nowadays, the age group, they love the phone, so there's an app they can do there. We, in the past, ordered, uh, offered a TES prep class to these people, and it would be someone from the high school would teach the four subjects to them. Um, that hasn't been offered since prior to COVID, um, due to just, it, no one available to teach the course and courses and, um, that kind of stuff. So I don't know if maybe that's something we could think about restarting up, because it was beneficial when we had that. Um, and I just, and they paid for it. It would be like, you know, they'd come and, and prepare them for the TES, it would be something that they had to pay for to come. But a lot of people, some people still ask me about that, if we offer that, and we don't unfortunately. Um, it was done by the high school, because a lot of the content in the TES is math and science and English, all from the high school level that they have to pass in order to come into the program.
And I have one more question. The medical students from the two programs we have here, do they take a tour of the facility and, and hear about LPNs and discuss that with you?
Yes, I actually did, um, a separate tour for them. Mrs. Betterby brought over all the students from juniors and seniors, actually. It went very well when we did a tour for them. We did an information session just for them, um, and it did go well. It's just, um, a lot of students are going to four-year programs, so that's where they're headed. Um, we do our best to get them in, or we're, we're currently, we're involved with a grant with, um, nursing pathways. Right now, we're also involved with another grant that is going to, um, try to help more of our CNAs from Diamond and from our other local schools to, um, transition into the LPN program, and they're going to be offering them some, uh, different, um, benefits, basically. So like, we accept the A and P from the high school now, if they come over to our program, we accept the A and P from Diamond, and that's, you know, it works out great, because then they don't have to take a difficult course like that. So we're trying to do that for other schools as well that offer health assistance, where they can take, um, an A and P approved course online, and they'll be able to enter our program too, and, you know, there's funds available with this. So we have, um, a separate group that we're involved in with just that, that we're trying to figure out how to get more CNAs into the program, because they do have, um, usually have some good success if they're in the C and N, CNA program already.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I would say that Ms. Kian is really, she's trying to fulfill, fulfill exactly what she told the committee, um, a while ago, is that she is aggressively pursuing, uh, applicants to come into the program, uh, and it seems to be meeting with success. I, I wish her the best to continue on doing this, and she's very aggressive. She wants the program to succeed, as you can tell, that they're hot and soul is into it, so it is. And continue with a thumbs up.
Yep.
And I would ask Mr. Bentley and, and Mr. Bozah, that we, um, all the jobs that we keep seeing every week that are funded by grants, maybe see if we can get that instructor, uh, put back into the system here, so our students can be, you know, that we can do that tech, uh, the, uh, boy, and, so we did have it before, I wonder where it went.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, TD, house building facilities, subcommittee, Mr. DiBiaseo?
Uh, we have Mrs. Torres here this evening. Um, Mrs. Torres, would you like to talk about the projects that are ongoing?
Certainly. Um, our community projects update, we, um, our largest one that we're working on right now is the Rosemary's, um, Wish Playhouse that is going to be completed at the end of this month, and will be on display at the Rhode Island Convention Center. Um, and then at the conclusion of the convention, it will be transferred to Bryant University, where it will be revealed to the little girl, you know, the house. So, and then also on, uh, March twenty-eighth, the students that worked on the playhouse will be traveling to the convention center to set it up there in the convention gardens and volunteer for that.
I know you told, uh, myself and the other committee members, uh, what, what is the theme this year?
The theme is mystical gardens for the, for the convention center, and the playhouse is a mystical dragon, um, playhouse with a turrek, stairs that will go up into the turret, so. It's very exciting. The students have been really, been working, um, really hard on it, creating, fabricating stone, faux stone to be placed on the front of the building, and Mr. Patello was able to collaborate with, uh, an industry partner, and they actually came in and showed the students how to do stucco, uh, because the design, the communication students made, it was a stucco building with stone on it. And so, um, that's not typically something that we do on a regular basis, so the partner, the community partner was able to come in, show the students how to fabricate, you know, the stone, how to do the faux stone, and paint it so that it looks like rock, and then the stucco on the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the, uh, as far as the house building goes, uh, we tabled it for another month. We do have an application, um, but they'll be working with, um, our attorney, Mr. Torres, and, uh, the carpentry shop along with the, uh, person who presented it, and try to work out the kinks and bring it back to us next month.
Correct, and then also the residency, the three-year residency requirement?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And then the twenty-two, twenty-three house building project is coming along very nicely. Uh, trim and doors are painted, uh, in the shop, and, um, the painting is occurring right now to the interior of the building. As soon as they're done, electrical and plumbing will go in and finish up, and then we'll do all the, put the trim back in doors.
Well, Mrs. Torres was referred to with the residency, it's usually when we, uh, when we do a project for somebody, they, according to the contract, they have to live there for at least, uh, three years before they can sell it. We're looking to, uh, DUCF in order to build this house, so the students have a house to build.
For the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four school. All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, Principal, Mr. Rabello?
Thank you. Uh, just a February recap, um, you know, mental health continues to sway schools and students across the nation. So our mental health team has created Wednesday drop-in session. Mr. Bentley actually had a fantastic announcement about it the other day. Um, so our mental health team is staying on top of all things related to student mental health. On February thirteenth, our, our ELA department held our first ever new author series. We actually brought in, uh, Rachel Menard to talk about her book, the writing process with our students. February fifteenth, we hosted Charlie Appelstein, those timely regarding, uh, student behavior and strategies teachers can use in the classroom. Uh, we, I, I thank our entire Diamond community for incredible civic mindedness, um, through our Coke Drive. And we were able to donate new and gently used winter coats to Diamond families that were in need, and the United Way of Greater Fall River. We also had a vaping, uh, parent forum. On February eighteenth, we sent the ski club for its second trip to Pat's Peak. Uh, the kids really loved it this year. We added a second trip, uh, because of popular demand. As you heard from our student representative, uh, representative, winter sports team absolutely blew it out of the water this year with playoff runs and records. So kudos to all those coaches and students. Um, we slipped this one in, uh, for March, the District USA, uh, Skills USA competition. A hundred and fifteen students, uh, competed in over forty, and I don't have the exact number, but close to fifty students, uh, received gold and silver medals, and they're headed to the state competition. Great job to those advisors and students. And Mr. Bentley will touch on, uh, Business Professionals of America, but, uh, Skills USA doing great. And then this Saturday, we're holding a student and family forum on school safety. Officer, uh, Loakes, our SRO, will be, uh, running point on that.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Rabello? See enough. Moving on to superintendent report, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, I'll make it as brief as possible. Uh, my report is set up with some sad news with the passing of Dolores Rodriguez. Anyone who, uh, had ever gone to the Rodriguez breakfasts over the years, it was quite the, uh, political as well as social, uh, event that took place. Uh, she passed away, uh, certainly are saddened by that, and we have to remember that, yeah, their legacy lives on through the Thomas Rogers Memorial Scholarship, benefiting literally hundreds, if not thousands, of students with tens of thousands of dollars that have been raised over the years. Uh, Tommy was a, uh, member of our culinary arts department when he passed away during the school day inside the building, and it evolved into a, much of a phenomenon that everybody got behind. The legacy lives on today. Second item is that enforced nine-one-one system. I brought to the committee, uh, something that could be happening with that. Uh, the nine-one-one is an alert that's on your app, and it notifies us when we're going into a special situation or a dangerous or violent situation. I put that on hold after something came to light, uh, of the system. It, you, I need to get a better handle on it. Recently, there was an incident that happened in an area high school that they did have this system. It met with mixed reviews, would that be a nice way of saying it, as far as from the, both the police department and from the school department, uh, so we're looking deeper into it, and it may not be needed at all, because in our new school, with the new schools that are being built, there's some kind of internal security system that is used anyway inside the construction. So I'm putting that on hold. OBS, for the committee's, uh, notification, the state OBS, uh, not our local one, is being held on Thursday, April thirteenth, in, uh, Mechanics Hall in Worcester. Uh, and because of that, you will see on the calendar item coming up later on, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed, that the next planned, uh, meeting of this committee may have to be, uh, halted, as both myself and Mr. Rabello are planning on that, as we have a group. Uh, there are two tables, uh, knowing Mrs. Torres, uh, Mrs. Torres heads this up, she puts it all together with the students and so on, so on. Uh, and it's quite the event in Worcester, and it showcases the, all the school's outstanding students. We have our own in Hannah Martin, a grade twelve student. She is just, she's, she's outstanding. Let's just leave it right there, because she epitomizes what it's about. Coming up, I have two reports that are buried inside your information that's in front of you. One is admission, uh, application, enrollment report. As you can see, from the active students is the breakdown of where we are as we sit here on March the sixth, uh, with, and where the breakdown is by grade level. And the report should be on the side, Mr. Bentley, it was underneath, it's in the yellow, you have paper, yellow paper. Very inside that yellow paper is a pie chart. That does show that. The second page may be more to the, uh, committee's, uh, interest about applications. We're always concerned about that. As of March the sixth, we have had six hundred and seventy-three applications, uh, for students to attend Diamond Regional. They are still being sorted down. The announcements will be going out shortly, uh, but right now, the guidance department is in between this work as well as doing, getting ready for the MCAS exams, which they head up, uh, to go up to our students. So the applications, uh, is very, very healthy for Diamond National, six hundred and seventy-three. You can see the breakdown as to what communities and what, how many they have put in per. Next report is the Cooperative Education Report. Again, continuing to let the committee know, uh, that our students are actively engaged in the community, in the community, in the jobs with their rate of pay. Uh, and you do see that I have, uh, asked Mr. Lozaro to go to the sites to check on the students, so that this is not just a paper report for the committee's certification, but also he is making site visits to speak with the employers, and of course, follow there, always engage them in hiring more of our students. So their, it's a co-op program, it's very strong. Very happy with that. Coming up on some student achievements, uh, as part of my report, this is all kind of late-breaking stuff. One is from Diamond Deca, uh, district summaries, and there is a report, and now, now, when they went to Hyannis, January, they did very well. Currently, our Deca students are in Boston right now as they're competing in their, well, for their state, uh, competition. Business Professionals of America, BPA, brand new club here at Diamond, brand new, first year, twenty-seven students went into competition, uh, I'll take that back, twenty students went into competition, eighteen of them earned a medal, total of twenty-seven medals, because it's spread out over multiple events. We have had students now qualified to go to Anaheim, California in April to compete in the national BPA. So for a first-year program, started up by two very dynamic instructors in programming, web design, getting the students all excited about showcasing their talents. Uh, they have done well. And that report is in your packet, and that is my report.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments for the superintendent?
Any admissions data in the, this sheet here, the second sheet, what is the total of seven seventy-one, the last line?
Take over that.
Is that under the recommendations?
Where are you there?
The very last line, left column.
Yep, that's on, well, that's, that's, cause that out, cause that out. That has, that has no bearing on that.
And it seems that the...
Good, I'm sorry.
Never mind. The recommendation, chart on the bottom, that what we see there, the breakdown, is for twenty-two, twenty-three, that's this past year's.
Correct, correct, I'll have that updated here. I'll have it updated.
Because that just seems different from what I remember being presented. I thought it was presented that almost all of them were strongly recommended students, and that seems to be, uh, very different than what I remember.
I just made a note to myself to ask.
I mean, I think it's great that there's such a disparity that not every, not all of seven hundred kids are strongly recommended, right?
Right, I, I think, I think it was that the, the percentage was either recommended or strongly recommended, and that may have been the comment, but we can, I'll ask.
Okay, okay.
And you can just get back to us on that.
I don't have those.
I'll, I'll ask, and I'll send that an email.
Yep.
And recommend, and acceptance going out next week?
Uh, March fifteenth.
Are the, in sending schools, I know I sent you an email, the sending schools will get also get email as well?
They'll get notification of who from their school was accepted to, on that same day, March fifteenth.
Send email.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to calendar events. We're going to need a change in the April thirteenth school committee meeting. Um, could you check your calendars and, and see what's available? Maybe, uh...
The week after. Week after the school vacation.
The week after the school vacation. Brief call in then?
Mr. Jennings had, when I discussed this with a possibility, when we, uh, talked about this agenda, he suggested the eleventh to the twelfth.
Eleventh to the twelfth, if it's available. Does everybody want to check now, or you want to, uh?
I don't have my schedule for April yet, anyway, so I swerve around it, just pick a day, and I'll work around it, the twelfth works for me.
Twelve? Twelve?
Twelve today.
Twelve, yep, okay. Twelve.
Done, you're good. Yep.
All right. Elliot? April twelfth, next school. Okay, and then the, uh, week of the seventeenth is school vacation. Coming to the end. Ah, not a good one.
Not a good one.
Okay, and we have a couple of, um, correspondence here.
Chairman, I can help you out on that, on the correspondence. One is, uh, the traditional from the MASC, uh, indicating that they have selected their day on the Hill, which is a, uh, political day, uh, for members of the school committee and our superintendents to mingle with the members of our legislative delegation. There is a planning meeting coming up, but the planning meeting is mostly on the side of the schools that'll be participating. So it is going to come up on May the fourth. Right now, I, right now, I should be planning on going to the, I'll put it on my calendar.
Do you want me to go with you?
I appreciate it.
I will pick you. I was picking you up already.
Okay.
Uh, this is an important, uh, face-to-face meeting at our delegation.
Before we go, though, we should sit down and talk about what we're going to talk about, again.
I agree.
And to whom?
Yes. Thank you.
Michael Gajic, by the way, is one of the most important people there.
Absolutely, chairman of the way, what is it means? So the committee, uh, the day on the Hill is scheduled for Thursday, May the fourth. Uh, I'll shoot out some dates, uh, to sit down for a, uh, cup of coffee, uh, that, and I really think that the members of the committee who would like to show up for that should have input on this, because, sure, we could be the person speaking, but we're in a, we are in a very important point here. We are in a very important point here at Diamond Regional with money and moving forward.
Yeah, we have to lay out the agenda basis, very briefly for them, because they have 700 million things on their agenda, so... And to whom we're going to visit?
Yes. I think that'd be important. On that day, I saw Senator Rodrick's at Soviet Elementary when we went to go read to the kids, and he actually mentioned that bill that's on the table. Mr. Bentley sent out a few advocacy notices to our community about MSBA projects. There's a bill on the floor right now to help out schools that are going through the MSBA process.
Yeah, the bill is from Representative Kennedy, and it's to ask for any of the projects that are... Having the schematic design to get the 390s, the 390s real over to 360s.
It's going to meetings.
He did mention it, and he's...
We'll talk about it. We'll get together.
I just wanted to say that if there was a... And I did not...
You want to make an appointment with the legislators that you want, our legislators?
Yes.
No sense in meeting with strangers?
We need our people.
Yeah. And asking them specifically for what we need, period.
About we said, we'll formulate a plan and bring it back to the committee for the April school committee, that the... I don't know if there is a subcommittee of legislative action.
Actually, I said I'm... I will not be here. I'll be away.
Okay.
Are you looking for a number of us to go up on the 4th, or for...
Yeah.
I think it's specifically designed for the school committee's membership to meet with the legislators and obviously advocate for their...
What's the time change?
You have to make an appointment with each legislators. Half the time is not there.
So the times are from 9 to... From 9 to about 12 is a presentation and a meeting, and then there's lunch, and then at 1:00 on, you meet with the legislators.
This year is so different, because legislators are not there physically, a lot of them. They're still doing... A lot of them are still doing remote. So when we figure out where we're going, I'll call the legislators to make sure they're there, and then if they're not there, we can go out for lunch.
All right, great.
That is important. We'll put that then on my calendar.
Right, just keep it in.
Okay. And the second item that's in there, Mr. Chairman, is from the NEASNC. It is reminding us, as you see by their letter, that they are requesting that the schools submit a special progress report by June the 1st, providing an update on the construction project. So very timely that letter came in with tonight's discussion, that that will be composed and transmitted once we have a little clearer picture. And that would go from... It's addressed to me, but we've been with the committees.
Thank you. And our next school committee meeting is set now for April 12th, and we have a reason to go into executive session.
We adjourn to Master General Order, Chapter 38, Section 21, A, Paragraph 2, Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparation Negotiations with Non-Unit Personnel to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Unit Personnel. Those would be two individual contractors, the superintendent principal, Mr. Rabello, interim superintendent director, Mr. Rabello.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, me.
Need a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aleah, roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Diviasio?
Yes.
Mr. Beeden?
Yes.
Ms. Menard? Father J?
Yes.
Dr. Nara?
Yes, we will be entering the open session and dealing with the two agenda items that[1739.02]